This regular meeting of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM Tuesday, September 21st, 2021 in room 137 of the Edison Building. We continue to provide time for comments to the board. This is a comment from the board. "We welcome all of you who are present or who are watching from home because you believe in the importance of quality education for all children. That is the focus and the work of this school board and the reason these board meetings are held. Anything that happens during these meetings that draws attention away from that focus is taking attention away from children and their education. Our kids and their futures are just too important for us to let that continue. We have implemented a policy that is very easy to understand. If you want to be in this building, you need to wear an appropriate effective mask. If you don't want to wear that kind of mask, don't be here. Watch the meeting from home and email your thoughts to board members or call or write letters. We will respond. Starting tonight, if you choose not to wear an appropriate mask while you're in this building and when approached by an administrator, you refuse to comply, you will be trespassed. That means you will be prohibited from setting foot on RPS school property for one year. A police officer may escort you out of the building if needed. We may choose to recess the meeting in order to have you trespassed. We're ready to do that." That's the comment from the board. The board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex-official member, and Assistant Board Clerk Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, will you please call the roll?
Thank you.
Clark Armanson?
Here.
Director Barlow?
Here.
Director Garcia?
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan?
Here.
Director McLaughlin?
Here.
And Treasurer Workman?
Here.
Thank you.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. 2.0 approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Dr. Pecel.
Madam Chair, I'd like to provide the board with an update on our efforts to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus in our schools.
All right, that will be Agenda Item 4.04. Move it. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Next, we will have comments to the board. I've already read the statement about masking. If you have signed up to be a speaker, each speaker will have three minutes. We ask you to respect this limit so others may have their opportunity. Ms. Severson will keep track of the time. When your name is called, please have a sight in front of them, a microphone, state your name and whether you are a resident of this school district. And our first speaker is Cornell Meyer.
Thank you.
So ultimately, the funds will probably end up being granted to the school district at some point through various initiatives. So if I could have you guys come up and then let's have our PSF board members come up also. And I didn't ask you if you guys wanted to say any words, but if you would like to say anything on why you're giving the donation or say anything to the board, that'd be just fine.
Sure.
If you want us to come up.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for being a good corporate citizen on behalf of Marco. Our community foundation gift of $10,000 we'd like to present, present to you. Thank you.
Could we do a picture? We're gonna pause real quick and have a picture opportunity.
Absolutely.
Do you want me in there or do you want?
Yeah. I'm in the middle.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Superintendent, board members, thank you for having us. Oh, thanks. Thank you. Superintendent, board members, thank you for having us tonight. We're here and if this happens, if there are, we have two student reps who might be joining us. They, as many students are, busy with other things and if they can make it, they will join us. Louis, I'm Ginny Amundson and I am president of Rochester Public School Foundation. And Justin Cook is also here with us here tonight and he is our grant committee co-chair. So our PSF is a foundation, we're a nonprofit community foundation, connects the community and our schools to advance and inspire educational opportunities for all students. One of our main, well, actually, our main activity is awarding grants to support innovative enhancements to curriculum that may not otherwise occur due to limited resources. Our PSF has awarded over $550,000 in grants since 1988. Now, our funds has come from a lot of different sources. We have personal and business donations, including school district payroll deductions. We have fundraisers. We typically would do Boo Fest. This year, we will not be able to do that, so we will be having some movie nights and the other fundraisers. And then one of our biggest, we are really appreciative of established memorial funds. So here are our funds that we have. And as you can see, different people have, over the years, donated different amounts. Some of their funds are established to promote, like for the Jacqueline Goodyear Fund Fine Arts. And some of them, like the Katherine K. Geisenhauer Memorial Fund, is for general use. And we appreciate both of them. We have, a lot of them are, you know, affiliated some way with the school district. Some have been like a principal or teachers in the past and some are just, have been involved with the schools. We also have things like the STEM Fund to promote science, technology, engineering, and math, and athletics and fine arts award. And the Chance Fund, again, is to promote activities for students who would otherwise not be able to participate. And, our students are not here. So our spring and summer grant cycle. Oh, we are here. Okay, great.
Yay.
Okay, so, so last, our, the last grant cycle that we were able to do, we did award $9,639 to fund six innovative projects at six different public school district sites. These were, we had 12 applications from district staff that, because again, with the school year, it was a little strange. We usually get more than that, but we were looking at that. And we have a group of, a committee that reviews our projects. And then when we have criteria, then we have things like, they have to have a positive long-term impact that aligns with the mission of our PSF. And we emphasize projects that benefit historically underrepresented communities. And so we selected six projects from the 12. And part of what our projects are required to do is to provide a brief report to show how the project went and have photos whenever possible. And we are going to quickly show one of these, how they did that. So.
So this is a spotlight on the Jefferson Thinkers Space, which was a project at Jefferson Elementary School. With the grant money, they were able to purchase a mobile Lego wall, art supplies, and a collaborative sticker mural. So throughout Jefferson Elementary School, teachers were able to check out these materials. And some students were even able to use the Thinkers Space materials to create movies using special effects. So essentially, the Thinkers Space encouraged a lot of collaboration and creative freedom.
Okay. Yeah, and, and we just love this, that one of the lessons learned is that you keep the projects simple, let the kids play, and they're gonna be creative and have fun together at school. These were some of the lessons learned from that one. So now. There we go. So now, we're gonna highlight the winners or the, the grant recipients from the, the current spring-summer 2021 grant cycle. Our first grant recipient is Amy Uwi, who present, who proposed book clubs for second grade students. I don't believe she's here. Right, okay, so the, this project is to provide a platform for students to work on their reading skills while also connect, drawing connections from the text to themselves, their peers in the world. Her proposal was to select a set of diverse books that represented the diversity of her classroom and a broad range of different reading levels so that she could group students together and let them just have fun reading and embrace the, the love of, of learning that will set them up to be successful members of society, as Amy noted, and we agree. The next project to highlight here is, M is from Minnesota, from Jenna Dare. Jenna, are you here? Could you come up and just, you can read this or you can just describe in your own words your exciting project here.
Okay, thanks. My name is Jenna Dare. I am an RPS teacher, but my site is Corey Hill Nature Center. I'm really thankful to the Rochester Public School Foundation for selecting this opportunity. Also, to Rochester Public Schools and to the Friends of Corey Hill Nature Center who provided additional support so that we could make this a reality for the 2021-22 school year. You can see what's on the screen, but you probably can't grasp the excitement that we have as a team of naturalists at the Nature Center to provide this opportunity to the newcomer students at Riverside. Kindergarten through fifth graders that are in their earliest proficiency of learning the English language. We're excited to provide activities like canoeing on the pond and tapping maple trees for maple syruping, discovering our local and migratory birds and banding them together. Bringing those students and their families alongside the work that we do in a community sense at the Nature Center. Bridging that relationship between school and community, but also that relationship between learners, as we're always learning, alongside our students. So we're just thankful for that opportunity and super excited to get started in November. So, thank you.
And also to highlight that this, this grant award was made possible through the Mike Vladin Memorial Fund, who established a fund in 1994 to further creative educational opportunities while providing assistance for students who might not otherwise be able to participate. Our next grant recipient comes from Erin Schwartz, who proposed All the World's a Stage: Targeting the Roots of Social Learning and Communication. Erin, are you, oh, wonderful. Can I ask you to come up?
Sure. Hi, I'm Erin Schwartz. I'm the speech pathologist with the Jefferson Autism Program. My project is attempting to do a comprehensive and dynamic social communication program with our students with autism. We're going to incorporate fun characters that represent different emotions with interactive experiences that culminates in dramatic play. And we're aiming to develop social-emotional communication skills that will hopefully benefit our students for their lifetime. I'm happy to report, we've already started this and we've introduced them to many of the emotions. And I've learned that happiness can be anything from petting a cat to a fidget to Mario Kart. One even invited me to play Mario Kart at my house anytime if I wanted to make him happy. And for me, happiness is being able to introduce these new things to my students. So, thank you very much.
So that project is made possible through the Jacqueline B. Goodyear Fund for Fine Arts that was established to promote exposure of RPS students to the fine arts. Next, we have a project from Don Nordine, Rail Home Living Skills: Using Tools at Home to Help Live Independently. Don, are you here? Oh, wonderful. So, come on up, we'll hear from Don. And this, this grant, we just wanted to highlight, is made possible through contributions from payroll deductions from employees of Rochester Public, Public Schools and IBM. We continue to be grateful for that partnership.
Thank you for the opportunity for these funds. I'm Don Nordine. I teach home living skills at Rail, which helps students who are on an IEP up until age 21 learn transition skills to, to live independently. And, and while I was helping out on the other side in the, in the shop class last year, and I had just, just got the job for, for Rail for this year, I thought, hey, this is maybe something we could do at Rail. And so, I wrote the grant, hoping that we can get basic household tools, take some time, learn how to use those tools to help people who are living independently. Maybe they can use the tools in a hobby, or maybe fix minor things around the house. So, I just want to thank Rochester Public Schools Foundation for this money, because it's sometimes hard to add just that little bit. And I know, school boards, and legislatures, and principals, and everyone tries to fund the best they can, but it's really nice to have this foundation to take the next one, next step. So, buying something like tools will last, you know, 20 years. So, that's a, it's a little bit of money, but it really means a lot. Thank you.
And, uh, this is, not that we aren't excited about all these proposals, but this is probably my personal favorite. The Gator News Network, if Alyssa Wilhelm and Thomas Brown are here, I'd like to invite you to come up. This grant was made possible through the Joseph Stanis Memorial Fund, that was established in 2009 to enhance and enrich classroom opportunities. Mr. Stanis was a longtime middle school teacher in RPS. Come on up, and you can just describe in your own words, or feel free to use the language I have there to characterize it.
Good evening. So, we wrote this grant for a weekly broadcast. We started at Gage last year, and we found out the hard way that sometimes equipment is really hard to get, especially the legit equipment, where you can actually hear people. So, we decided to write this grant, so that we can get that legit equipment. And what we do is, we work with more fourth graders right now, but we're trying to get fifth graders in, as well as third graders, for them to start producing and writing their own scripts for broadcasting. These are sent out weekly to the school, and it's just to share, like, what's happening, the fun stuff, what's for lunch, what's the weather like outside, but also giving them an opportunity to share their voice, and their thoughts, and just to see faces on the screen, because it's been kind of hard lately, seeing everyone and interacting with everyone.
And as Alyssa said, we are in our, we, second year. We started this last year. I just have to say that it has been absolutely wonderful to see the students embrace this, to get excited about something, and to really put themselves out there. So, this has been a wonderful opportunity. Thank you to our PSF, the committee, contributors, and I have to say, special thanks to that Gage staff, that's been wonderful, and with embracing this, inspiring them to try, and getting just as excited as we are about this.
And then, our, I think this is our last project here. We're going to hear about the milling machine for robotics and STEM education, from Tim Alexander and Stephen Rose. Rose, okay. Yeah, come on up. And, and just to highlight, this grant was made possible through the STEM Fund, established in 2011, to promote the interests of our youth in the educational areas of science, technology, engineering, and math. And this one, as you'll hear, fits just perfectly with that.
Yeah, thank you, Justin. Good evening, everyone. My name's Steve Moroz, and with Tim Alexander, we represent, we coached high school robotics Team 2530, which is comprised of students from all three of our Rochester Public School high schools, as well as eighth grade students from our middle school. So, we bring all these different schools together on the one cohesive team, to design, develop, build, and test, and maybe have to rebuild and test, depending on the Tesco, competition-worthy robots that are over 125 pounds in weight, to go against, to compete with and against teams from around the world. Thanks to the Rochester Public Schools Foundation grant, we're able to procure, as, as Justin mentioned, this milling machine. And what it does is, it gives us ability to now create and machine different parts that we didn't have the capability to before. Along with machining those parts, and much more efficient machining of those parts, our students are also able to have the ability to design parts for this capability. And our students design using computer-aided design tools, which are actually our state-of-the-art, and are very marketable skills in the industry, as they want to pursue careers in engineering, in design, in drafting. And our programming team also then, with this milling machine, gives us parts earlier, so our programming team has some time to actually test it out on the robot. So, once again, thank you very much to the Rochester Public Schools Foundation for their donation towards this machine for our team.
Tim, anything you'd like to add?
Sure. There was a comment earlier about tools and, and the longevity of tools. And I'm, I'm actually returning to the Kellogg workspace. I was a student there in the late 70s, and we're using tools in there that were old when I was a student. So, you know, but we've repurposed them. We've, we've cleaned them up and made them go. So, hopefully, this is something that will last us a long time. You know, I don't know if it'll be that long, but, but it is cool that we're able to keep using these, these valuable resources over and over again. And, and thank you for the use of the space. It's been really great for us.
And then, just to, just to note, that we, that was the Spring and Summer 2021 Grant Cycle. That means Fall and Winter 2021 Grant Cycle is coming shortly. So, watch your email, RPS staff. Those should be hitting your, your inboxes soon. Start thinking about your good ideas for next year. And also, as a, as a general awareness, we're always looking for help in scoring grant submissions, particularly from RPS staff. Get in touch. You can do that on our website at rpsf.org. And we will be hosting a drive-in movie series, in lieu of Boo Fest this year, in view of the pandemic, that one just didn't make sense. So, look out for that as well in October. Any questions? Jenny or I would be happy to address those. And then, also, to the, to the recipients, if we could meet just following this, somewhere out in the hallway, out of the way, so we could take a couple pictures, that would be wonderful. And...
Could you, would you answer, do, do, do you think that Jackie...
Yes. This is Ayalua. Come on up.
Hello, I'm Ayalua.
You did such a great job, and you did not get the applause you deserve. So... Thank you. And other questions? Mr. Barlow?
Well, I'll ask a question, but I certainly wanted to commend Jenny, the work you've done over the years, the foundation itself, and I appreciate tonight's presentation. Of the five years I've been on the board, I think this may be the first, be the first time that I recall that something to this degree was presented. And it, it so has impacted me to where I think I'm going to, well, I'm going to write a check to the foundation myself, to support this great work you're doing.
Well, all right.
Directly to more grants. And so, the more money we raise, the more grants we can give. And we have never been able to give as many as we would like. So, thank you. And yes, and this just kind of shows, I mean, we do come and present this, but it is nice to actually have the visual, to really make that impact.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to 4.02, RPS Online. The recognition continues.
Board members, this is a very brief but important item. It's in keeping with the spirit of what we're trying to bring to all aspects of our work, which is continuous improvement. As you'll remember, at the last board meeting, I did a brief overview of the launch of our new online school, and mentioned a group of people who have been heroic in putting incredible effort into bringing that school to life. We are completely full with a waitlist of more than 500 students, which is quite an accomplishment. And after that brief recognition, I found out there's two people that I missed. And I said, I don't want to let that go. So, I want to acknowledge Lynn Robleski, who actually works in transportation, but who provided indispensable help in adding and dropping students as they registered for RPS Online, which happened a lot outside my office for weeks and weeks and weeks. And so, I know that Lynn was critical to that. And in human resources, Tammy Barrett was heroic in recruiting staff, some of whom are not even in Minnesota, teaching that work. And so, I want to thank Lynn and Tammy, and apologize for not having had them on the list last time, but I didn't want to let it go. And we look forward to providing the board with a full overview of RPS Online, and where we are with that exciting new offering sometime later in the year.
Thank you. 4.03, Board Member Committee Updates. All board members serve on a number of committees that meet throughout the week. Are there any reports about work you've been doing you'd like to share with the board and the community? Well, the Community Engagement Committee has something to share. All of us received a letter that was written by some of the most prominent groups in public education. They represent school boards, superintendents, administrators, school business officials, principals, special ed administrators, teachers, and other educators from across the state. They've issued a joint statement in support of increasing education equity, including in race and gender. And Mr. Barlow and Ms. Nathan and I would like to read this. It begins, "Nearly all Minnesotans agree every student deserves an education that encourages them to understand and value who they are and where they came from, so they can reach their full potential, no matter their skin color, background, gender, or zip code. Too often we have fallen short of this goal, especially for our students of color, LGBTQ plus students, students living in poverty, and students with special physical, with special physical or emotional needs. We are committed to reversing this trend with programs and policies that meet students where they are, academically, emotionally, physically, and lift them up so every student has an excellent chance at academic success. For us, this is the definition of education equity."
We have seen progress, but have no doubt that more needs to be done to make our schools safe, welcoming, and effective for all students. If nothing else, demography demands we quicken our pace. More than a third of our students statewide are students of color, and our state becomes more racially and culturally diverse each, every year. Unfortunately, many communities throughout Minnesota are feeling the effects of a well-organized national campaign, pushing an agenda that misrepresents the vital work of racial and gender equity in our schools, and then mislabels it as critical race theory. This deceptive campaign pushes the idea that educational equity is a zero-sum proposition, that it is necessary for some students to lose opportunities to help other students succeed. Nothing could be further from the truth. Educational equity is giving all students a world-class education.
To be clear, every student, white, black, brown, or indigenous, benefits from learning a deeper respect and understanding for their neighbors through an honest education in social studies, language arts, and all the other subjects taught in our schools. As representatives of classroom educators, administrators, and school boards throughout Minnesota, we value students for who they are today, and our organizations are committed to developing all of them into informed citizens, good neighbors, and critical thinkers who can live in, and someday lead in, a multicultural, multiracial Minnesota. Our kids deserve nothing less.
Thank you. 4.04, this is a COVID update. Dr. Bacall.
Madam Chair, and Director Marvin, and Director Barlow, I'm going to remove my mask, because there's some numbers I want to share that I have to get right, and my glasses will fog over in a problematic way. As we've had several speakers point out tonight, mitigating the spread of COVID in our schools is very much on everybody's mind. And literally, this afternoon, we got some data that we've been waiting for, to inform the next wave of those mitigation efforts. And so, I want to share it with the board, and those of you gathered here tonight, at a macro level, and we'll be sharing it at a somewhat, somewhat more detailed level later in the week. That data is actual vaccination status from the Minnesota Immunization Information Connection, or MIC, as it's called. It's a statewide repository of COVID vaccine status. And the reason that we felt this data was so important is that making decisions based upon not the perceived or assumed vaccine status of our students and our staff, but the actual, or as close to actual data as we can get, is really critical in having a smart strategy going forward. We have, for a long time, had data on Olmsted County as a whole, but we know that Rochester is different than the county, and Rochester Public Schools is different than Rochester. So, what have we learned, literally, this afternoon? And I want to thank the members of our team who worked diligently to pull this data together. I believe we're the first school district in the state that has even done this. We're certainly the first that's released it. And before I do, I want to make really clear that the vaccination status of our district and our schools and programs in it is not necessarily the primary responsibility of those schools and programs, that these are decisions that individuals make, and that parents are making, and that our students, as they are high school and middle school students in many cases, are making. So, this is not something that should be seen as simply the responsibility of the school or the district. It's a shared responsibility, because we know the best path out of this pandemic is vaccination. So, for students age 12 and over, the key thing, and many of you know, I used to work for a research organization, so I won't nerd out here too much, but the key thing is, when you send a data file off, you need to get a match, so that the person you send the record off for is actually verified to be the person that you're seeking. And that might sound simple, but it can be very complex. For the students in Rochester Public Schools, we got a records match rate of 95%, which is extraordinarily high. So, we know that the kids are the kids who attend Rochester Public Schools. We saw a range of vaccination rates among our students, from a low of 39% to a high of 75%. And those were both at the high school level. So, we have a range of progress to make, as we look at our student vaccination rates. The rest were all in between. The middle schools were obviously in the middle, because they also include younger students below age 12, who cannot yet be vaccinated. So, the broad range was from 39% in one school to 75%. Overall, in Rochester Public Schools, 58% of our students have had one dose, and 53% have had two doses. So, that's where we are with students. We also were able to pull together vaccination rates for staff, that we are very much confident enough to release, but that do need to have an important asterisk by them. The match rate for the staff data file was 63%. And that could be due to things like people getting a vaccine shot out of state, which doesn't record in the Minnesota Immunization Information Connection. It's also critical to note that these data were anonymized. We never knew that Mr. Grayler did or didn't get a COVID shot. We sent the data off, and we got back anonymized percentages, and so, it is completely blind to us as to the individual decisions that staff members have made. So, here's where we stand. The, this includes not just schools, but also programs and central office departments. Our schools and programs and central office departments with the lowest vaccination rates were between 70 and 75% vaccinated, and the ones with the highest vaccination rates were at 95%. Overall, for staff in Rochester Public Schools, 90% of our staff have had one dose, and 88% of our staff have had two doses. For Olmsted County, as many of you may know, the overall vaccination rates are 84% at one dose, and 80.8% at two doses. And so, we're doing a bit better than the county, which is doing a bit better than many other places. So, what are we going to be doing with this data? We'll be sharing the individual school program data with principals and school program leaders tomorrow, and we'll release it on Thursday. And with apologies to board members, I did have this written down for you, but having been a classroom teacher, I didn't give it to you, because you would have just read it and not listened to me. And we have a copy for the press, as well, that you have it available. We'll be sharing it with schools and programs on Wednesday, and then we'll be releasing it publicly on Thursday. What this data will allow us to do is to begin to make decisions about some of the issues that have come up tonight. Vaccination requirements have come up. Before, we might require people to do something like that, which obviously would come before the board. We want to know what our actual rates are. I will, I will stress, I wanted actual data, as opposed to self-reported data or extrapolated data. We also have some really big other issues going on. We also have some really big other issues going on. Quarantine, in particular, is a concern. Our spread of the virus is increasing, but it looks better than in other places. But because the spread of the virus increases, which we expected, the Delta variant is twice as transmissible, at least, as the original variant of the coronavirus, we also see quarantine increasing. And we have gotten a lot of concern from parents who really want their kids in our schools. And so we'll be looking at that issue, vaccination requirements, and a whole array of other aspects of our mitigation strategy using these data that we think are very important, including continuing to partner with the county and potentially others in opening more vaccination clinics so that we can actually make it very easy for students and staff to do that. So in some ways, I apologize for adding this to the agenda at the last minute, but I wanted to be sharing it with the board and, by extension, with the community as soon as we have it. And we'll be continuing this dialogue in the days ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Pekel. Any questions?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
On the match rate of 63% for staff, does that mean we don't know the vac status of the other percentage of staff?
Madam Chair, members of the board, yes. We got, that 63% included some, we know you're not vaccinated, and it included many we obviously know you're vaccinated. The vast majority of our staff are vaccinated. I know that the out-of-state piece could be big for us because we've had a lot of folks get vaccinated in Wisconsin and Iowa. So that's one issue. This is also, as with any dataset, subject to coding problems and other things, so we'll be looking at it. I think 64% is sufficiently high, and the numbers track broadly enough with our county information, that I was confident enough to release it. I think it's going to be representative broadly of what we see as we potentially can add additional data to that.
Dr. Pekel, the overall rate of students, is that eligible students, or is that kids 12?
Thank you. Director McGlaughlin, so important, it's eligible students, so you're 12 or over. We heard some encouraging news today about, well, the last couple of days, about one vaccine potentially being approved by the end of October, which would be, for younger students, which would be very exciting. And so, but yeah, that's for kids 12 and over. It's one reason why, when we release the middle school numbers, that we all have to take that into consideration, that there's kids in those schools that can't be vaccinated, which, as everyone in one of our middle schools knows, creates particular challenges for mitigation in those settings.
5.0 Consent Agenda. Board members, are there any items you want removed for separate consideration? Seeing none? Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. 7.01, this is under Safe and Welcoming Environment, an overview of school-based efforts to help students transition back to school. This is an information item. Dr. Pekel.
Thank you, board members. As we have four of our really fantastic leaders join us, we're so excited.
We're nattering things over.
Let me just frame why we wanted to take a brief moment to highlight this issue of helping students transition back to school. It's always critical, but it's especially critical right now as many of our students really are transitioning back to learning from an extended period of not being fully engaged in learning. One of my favorite examples from research of the importance of starting outright involves a very classic, famous study called the Pygmalion Study, that I can't believe they got approved, but where they lied to teachers and told them that certain of their students had taken a test, which they called the Harvard Test of Inflected Intelligence, and that these students were going to be high performers even though they might start out struggling. It was a complete lie that the researchers were authorized to tell to the teachers. I don't think you could ever get that approved today. But what happened, and has been repeated multiple times, is those students did far better than they historically would have done, or than a control group of their peers did. So the beginning and the expectation really mattered. What is relevant from that study for our topic here today is they've replicated that study, but not telling the teachers the lie before they meet the students, telling them the lie in the middle of the year, and giving them this false information once they had already met the kids. What they found when they did the Pygmalion Experiment for students after teachers and students had already met each other is it had no effect. The perceptions had already been formed. But when we begin right, it begins to impact all of the things that we do. And so it is really exciting, and we'll just kind of go in order. We have Jared Grayler from Bishop. We've got Amy Adams from Longfellow. We have Angie McCandless from Kellogg, and we have Troy Priggy from Mayo. And we'll just invite them to share a snapshot of the ways that they have sought to help kids, maybe also educators, transition back into school this year. So thank you all for taking time. I know how crazy busy you are. And if I messed up your order and you've prearranged it differently, you can, awesome. Awesome. Thank you so much. And we'll give board members, for sure, at the conclusion, a chance, but I think, Madam Chair, if board members have a particular question or observation, maybe you can also just jump in as we go.
Sure.
We're going to kind of segment it based on elementary, middle school, and high school as well. Dr. Pekel, Chairman Marvin, Board, thank you so much for letting us share a little bit about the start to the year. Again, I'm Jared Grayler, Principal at Harriet Bishop Elementary, and Amy Adams and I are going to share about our Step Into Learning at the elementary level. For us at Bishop, this was not a new system for us. It was not a new start to the year. Just to kind of review what Step Into Learning is and what that means, we take the first two days of the school year, in this case, it was August 30th and August 31st, where we set up 30-minute individual conferences with students and their families. We schedule those through our Onward Skyward Schedular. We reach out multiple times in multiple different ways to ensure that everyone has access, including accessing our bilingual supports, reaching out personally to families that have not signed up yet, home visits, and all the other pieces necessary to make sure that it's a successful start, that everyone feels welcome and invited into our building at the start of the year. During these conferences, it's not only that opportunity to meet with the individual teacher, but it's also that opportunity to connect with building-wide resources, with our PTSA, in some cases, get school pictures and some of those other fun things at the beginning of the year taken care of, meet with the nurse, and all those other things that kind of just have to happen before the first day of school to make sure that it's successful. All of our Bishop staff were on duty during those two days, including our paraprofessional staff, so all of our students and families had the chance to see all of our staff around the building on those days. The why of this, and why this started, and why it continues to, in my perspective, be very successful and an important way to start the year, is that it provides just that individual time. If you're familiar with maybe what our typical Meet the Teacher night would be, it might be a couple hours where everyone is coming into the building at one time, the teacher is frantically bopping around, trying to connect with everyone and make them feel as though they're welcome and they're important, but it's just not as individual and just not as special as I feel this is. It also just expands those opportunities to connect with the school, to connect with school resources, to actually have time for families to ask questions and feel as though that their questions are heard and validated during that time. For us, especially, being in a new building this year, this just allowed for a smooth transition into a brand-new space. Many of our students and families had questions about where's the bus going to drop them off, where's their classroom at, and all those other pieces that were especially essential for us being in a new building, as well as for our students coming into a new classroom, into a new grade level, and just getting to meet that teacher and have that teacher there at the door just for themselves during that time. Another part of this that happens at this time, aside from that relationship building, is it does give us a chance to do some pre-assessments, so that way we can see where students are at before the hustle and the bustle of the beginning days of school. So we have a little bit of idea of what sort of academic skills students are coming in with, and it just allows us to begin some of that instruction that much earlier as well. So Amy's going to talk about how it went at Longfellow.
Well, thank you for having us. I appreciate the opportunity to share. I'd like to share a little bit of our journey at Longfellow, as to how we came into Step Into Learning. We'd heard about Step Into Learning in other schools, and I had the opportunity to go and walk alongside Jared and see it in action, and it was really exciting to see the families connecting with each other and with the staff members, and just a really calm environment. And so we started the conversation at Longfellow. Historically, we had done that Meet the Teacher of two hours, everyone coming on campus, being able to do a quick check-in with the teacher, and it was great to connect, but we did feel like there were pieces missing. We felt that it was rushed, and we really wanted more time. And then July of 2019 came with COVID, and so we had to adapt and adjust with our Meet the Teacher evening, which really turned out to be, in our mind, that adjustment was a blessing in disguise. We scheduled one-on-one conferences with our families, and overwhelmingly, the response from families and teachers was how much they enjoyed that one-on-one opportunity to start to build that positive relationship and really get to know our children and our families and make that connection. So that really sparked an interest in attempting to jump on board with Step Into Learning. So we're really appreciative of the board's support and Longfellow joining the ranks. So we did implement Step Into Learning for the first time this past summer, July of 2021, and we were able to survey our families and our staff afterwards. And again, much of what Jared described is what happened at Longfellow as well. With starting in July, we too had the opportunity to offer school photos as well, which was a very big hit with everyone, that they had the chance to come in and take their school pictures. So we had 58 families that were able to provide us feedback, which represented 73 students, and 95% of those that responded to our survey said that they would like to have that Step Into Learning format again next year. They really appreciated the time. And 5% did mention that they would like to go back to the Meet the Teacher evening. Some of the things and themes that families shared with us was that they really appreciated that one-on-one time with the teacher. They had time to thoughtfully ask questions. Their child reported feeling really comfortable that first day of school. They had the chance to really talk about procedures and routines. Where do I pick my child up? Where can I pick them up after school, too? And just, again, our philosophy of going into it was really, how can we start to welcome them back and begin to build that positive relationship? Another family reported to me that I really appreciated is that their child felt more than just a number. They felt valued and part of the community just from that first initial meeting, too, which I thought was really valuable feedback. And again, parents appreciated that the school photo wasn't done after recess, so they had the opportunity to tidy them up a little bit before the picture was taken, which is great. Staff members felt that the atmosphere was really calm. Their students just noticed a much calmer entry into the first day of school. Some teachers were able to complete some baseline data, too, and get to know their students' academic skills, but again, the main focus was positive relationships. We do utilize the app called CSO, in which we connect with our families throughout the year, and we had the opportunity to set families up for success in getting on to CSO and connecting with our teacher. And throughout the one-on-one conferences, they had individual bilingual specialist support for those families that needed and benefited from that support. So we felt really grateful that they were really able to walk alongside those families individually to provide that support as well. Our health office also reported the amazing opportunity to really get to know the health concerns, to keep their children safe as they came to school, and get to know the unique needs of each child as well. As we reflect upon each experience, there's things that we want to take a look at a little bit differently. We need to look at scheduling, I think, a little more carefully, especially for families that have multiple children in our school. We want to make sure that we use their time efficiently and effectively, too, and make sure that they're able to come in at the same time. And we, again, want to make sure that we utilize our bilingual specialist talents efficiently and effectively so that we block out some time for them to make sure that it's a little bit more fluid. And also, just again, tidying up of some communications with families, too, in signage as they enter the building. And as you know, we'll be opening up a new building next July, so we're hopeful that we can continue with Step Into Learning as we welcome our families there, too.
And as I reflect on our highlights at Bishop, you know, as I said, we've been doing this for a few years, so we didn't survey our families this year, but it consistently has been between 97, 98% of our families that feel this is the way to start the school year, and now that we're a few years into it, continue to get positive feedback around this is the way to go. We can plan for this as a family. We anticipate this is how the year is going to start as well. In terms of just, you know, as we're coming back off of the year that was last year and entering into this school year, it was such an important part to be able to connect individually as many of our families returned to school, where they were in distance learning all of last year, and just to get re-acclimated back into a building, again, especially for us being in a new space. You know, this started off as a pilot program at Bishop as part of a grant, and the focus at that time was really on academics. Although academics in this setting are still very important, we can't lose sight of the relationships and the formation of the relationships, and, you know, as Amy talked about, people feeling comfortable in the building and easing in as well. So that's been something, as we continue to learn and grow and refine, that continues to be at the top of our priorities as well. Thank you for letting us share about Step Into Learning. Thank you.
All right, I'll speak to the program that we ran at Kellogg. The middle, a lot of middle school organizations report that our goal should be maybe three times an opportunity for students to be in the building before the school year starts to help ease their transition. And so that's kind of always been our goal. We have a few things that we put in place along the way. We typically have spring visits, and we weren't allowed those this year, and so our students weren't able to see the building prior to the end of their fifth-grade year. We have offered sixth-grade seminar in middle school prep in the past, but there were some hurdles with that being a little cost prohibitive, and so we were really trying to look at ways that we could help our students get familiar without creating obstacles for families, making sure that this was accessible to all families. At Kellogg, we ended up hosting an event six times this summer called Popsicles with the Principals, where it was just a free drop-in opportunity for families to come, walk through the building, and then we met outside, had popsicles, and had Q&amp;A out on our front steps. And that was incredibly successful, so much so that we had to buy popsicles two more times after the initial purchase, but it was great. And then we also had our open house that we typically have in the evenings, but we limited teacher access because of COVID, and so the Meet Me in the Middle became a really critical piece of our transition for students. We had hosted something similar last spring when we transitioned back to in-person learning, so we had a little bit of a trial run and an idea of what we were getting into. For incoming sixth graders, we offered a slower pace and allowed for some strong relationship building within the advisory program. And for seventh and eighth graders, they really got a glimpse of others that are other students that are new and a smaller setting in which they could ask their questions to become familiar with things that were happening, that would be happening at Kellogg. We modeled our program similarly across middle schools, and so our sixth grade, we had about 300 students that attended Meet Me in the Middle, and seventh and eighth grade, we had about 100 students in seventh grade and about 30 in eighth grade that joined us. We also have a group of mentors called Comet Crew. They're eighth graders that are familiar with the building. They apply to be mentors, and they joined us on that day also to help mentor our sixth grade students. And so our Comet Crew kids broke up and joined our sixth grade classrooms, and they spent the morning with their advisory. During that advisory time, they had a general overview of the building and our expectations. They had tours. They did quite a few advisory activities to help build relationships in that smaller group. They did the dreaded task of learning how to open lockers. They learned how to read a secondary schedule for sixth graders, and then even knew to seventh and eighth grade students, that was important for them also. We also found time during the day for them to be introduced to counselors and social workers so that they knew what they did and how to find them. Our sixth graders had a special introduction to our musical director, since that's something that we do right away in the fall as a production. And then sixth graders were able to distribute their advices and get them logged into Google Classroom for the first time so that we were prepared in the event of any kids being quarantined right out of the gate. They followed the lunch schedule in a normal routine, which is also kind of overwhelming in a building of 1,100 students. It's important to make sure we have those routines down. And then in the afternoon, after everybody was through with lunch, we walked through an abbreviated schedule, so about 15 minutes in each of their classes, so that they could meet each of their teachers, get a feel for the building, and then ascend off in our regular bus routine, which is also a busy time of day. The feedback was, like I said, Popsicles with the Principals had a great turnout, open house. We extended it to two days instead of one, extended our hours, and the feedback was awesome from parents. Lots of them said we should do it this way every year, which we'll see if we're able to continue that, but I think the feedback was really good. The Meet Me in the Middle, we had lots of great support. We actually had one parent who emailed before even the end of the day, and she said, "My sixth grader called me during his recess and said, 'I already love this place, and I'm already proud to be a Comet.'" And I was like, that is a really, really great outcome for something that we were on trial run with. So next year, our intention is probably to reduce the day for seventh and eighth grade because we won't have as many. We'll have a smaller amount of those kids, and I think in some cases, they were one or two kids with the teacher for 15 or 20 minutes, and that got to be a little bit awkward and uncomfortable. And so I think we'll probably reduce the day for seventh and eighth grade, but stick to the full day for sixth grade. The sixth graders being able to explore the building without the volume that we typically have in the building made such a difference for them. There was definitely a calmer sense on the first full day of school, and we're hoping that maybe it'll flow a little bit more smoothly without COVID. But we wanted to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to try this program out this year and helping us to find better ways to just transition kids to the middle school experience. experience.
Madam Chair, members of the boards, Superintendent Pekel and District Cabinet. First off, I want to thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to have our first day with just the ninth graders in the building. I speak on behalf of all three high schools. We really value that opportunity to have with our ninth graders each day. I know, I don't know if it benefits the ninth graders more or the parents more, knowing that they're not walking through the hallways with 1,500 to 2,000 other students. The anxiety level is certainly lowered when we have that opportunity. And I kind of want to plant the seed right now. Hopefully, we can talk about this more later, about just having ninth graders just for the full day and then bringing the upperclassmen in. Some of the feedback we received from our upperclassmen, when they come in for that second half of the day, it just doesn't seem like it's enough time to get acclimated with their classes and run through syllabus and do all the meet-the-greet things. So we'll kind of table that to a later time, but all three principals at the high schools are interested in talking about that a little more. So I think we can all look back when we took our first couple steps into high school, what that was like and kind of the feeling that you have when you do that. And our ninth graders received a video from our Spartan 300 students, who are our students that are our upperclassmen, that want to give back and make sure that each of our ninth graders have the opportunity to have a good first impression of Mayo High School, build that school spirit, do some, get-to-know-you activities and do some fun things. And they certainly came up with some creative ideas along the way. But when our students showed up on that first day of school, they walked into a staff gauntlet, kind of the COVID style of a staff gauntlet this year, where there wasn't the high fives and the fist bumps, but the staff were away from the students, and they walked through and were clapping for them. And they kind of come in, and they're like, "Whoa." We could see their eyes, couldn't see the anxiousness on their face, but with the mask. And then they traveled into the gymnasium where they met their Spartan 300 leaders, and there were two to four leaders that would be with 10 to 12 ninth graders. And you meet them for the first time, and then they went on tours. They walked around, they went through the lunch line. If they wanted a locker, they showed them how to open the locker. And so they did a bunch of activities for the first part of the morning. And then the second part of the morning, they ran through a mock schedule where they had the opportunity to go in to their classrooms and meet their ninth-grade teachers. And so we felt that that was an important thing to add this year, which it really had some great feedback about that, having that opportunity. So when you walk into that classroom, you can recognize a face and a teacher when you get there. And then the second half of the day, when the big kids came to school, we ran a modified schedule, eight-period day. And they sort of get the feel of being in a hallway that's crowded and walking through and then trying to find their classes. You know, our track record is pretty good. We've not lost a high schooler yet, so we want to continue to do that. And with about 2,000 students at Mayo, there are a lot of them. We're outnumbered, and I'm just so grateful for our Spartan 300, our upperclassmen that are taking these students under their wings and helping them, you know, be a Spartan. And, you know, our culture at our school is, I put it at the top of any school, and we are proud of that, and we're so grateful to have the opportunity to just bring those ninth graders in and get them going off on the right foot.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments, Mr. Barlow?
Excellent presentation from each of you. Principal Jared, just a quick question regarding the pre-assessments that you undertake. How does that relate to ultimately student achievement or capacity? And then a follow-up in regards to, some families may not have transportation and/or ability to take off from work to participate. So how can you explain or share how you serve them?
We'll go to the second part first. We run one night later, so we're trying to kind of open it up. One day is from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, so we're trying to kind of hit multiple schedules during that time. But I appreciate you bringing up the transportation issue. That's one that, luckily, we haven't had to cross yet, but I'm sure colleagues have had to, you know, to partner with as well. I know another, you know, we've been creative in some of those aspects before. We're fortunate to have some district transportation vehicles, as well as, you know, work with Uber or Rideshare, any of those sort of things as well. And then to the achievement piece, you know, kindergarten might be some of those pre-assessment skills, you know, do you know your letters? Do you know your numbers? Do you know your name? And at the upper-grade levels, we do a lot of our focus on our reading, the independent reading leveling assessment, the ERLA with our Action 100, which just helps us be able to start instructions sooner. So the direct tie, I don't know if there's a direct tie to student achievement, but I think if we're able to have some of those pre-skills or to know where students are at coming in, just allows us to begin instruction that much sooner as we look at doing some of our guided reading groups, for instance, or even in kindergarten, just to get a better sense of who might need more support in other areas, who's ready to continue to go and grow in areas as well.
Okay, thank you.
Particularly to the Step into Learning, did you get any information about being able to do this for a couple of years versus New Year, the level of participation? Were all the families able to participate? Or has it, particularly the multiple years, has it varied where the parents that weren't able to attend at all?
That's a good question. So yes, there were some that were not able to participate, but in general, that's a much lower percentage than what my experience has been at some of those Meet the Teacher, those larger events. I would say this year, there was probably 15 or so families that we weren't able to connect with out of our 475 students. So, you know, a fairly high percentage of our families were able to come to that. And those that weren't able to come, that conversation might have happened virtually as well, or that might have been a phone call or that sort of connection as well. I think there's very few, if any, that we at least didn't know kind of how they were doing and where they were at at the beginning of the school year, so.
And at Longfellow, I think we found the same thing, because we started communicating fairly early about our process and our needs. And if families reached out to us and said we had a vacation planned, we might be running late, so we tried to find any way that we could to connect with them. We did have some teachers that connected with the families the Monday before, or even the first day of school brought them in early if they weren't able to connect with that Step into Learning time, too, just to adapt and adjust to what the family needs as well.
I appreciate that flexibility. That's really good. I was expecting the opposite, actually. So that's really great to hear that you're getting better response.
Anything else, board members?
And one additional question. So as it relates to transitioning back to school and the reported learning loss, how are things going?
Well, we're almost a full quarter in at Longfellow. I'm grateful we're coming up on our fall break, so we are in week eight of instruction. So I would say our teachers shared that they were quite surprised at the levels coming in and, you know, concerned, because they knew that the students needed a lot of support academically, but also socially and emotionally to support their needs and re-acclimate them back to the regular start to the school year as well. But I feel like together, they work together to really hit the ground running, and I feel that the students are gaining ground fast. You know, with that Step into Learning, we did get to know our students in a one-on-one situation where we could find those areas of growth and those of areas that we could celebrate and push further as well. So that provided kind of a fast track to start those interventions and also the other supports that students might need as well. One thing I think about with distance learning last year that was such a challenge with students and not having them in the school, but what we did see across from most of our elementary colleagues and secondary as well, is teachers really came together and collaborated and shared ideas. And that's one thing we feel that Cabinet and School Board has really continued to celebrate and encourage, is continue that collaboration, keep that going. And I feel that teachers have really, they've always valued that collaboration, but they have found new ways to connect and collaborate together to meet the needs of students as well. So although it was a slow start, I feel like we're really picking up speed as we move through our quarter as well.
I would say, I would say that our data would have indicated at the end of the year that our students were not starting this year in the same place that we were expecting students to start in years past. So that was something that we spoke with staff about right away, just to be familiar with present levels of performance, to make sure that we're prepared for the differences. We also have collaboration time built in for our staff every other day, so that they can connect and work together on planning. I think that over the last week, one of our hurdles has been the number of students that we've had quarantined. That presents challenges for students and also presents challenges for our staff to try to make those connections while still being really present for the kids that are in the building. So I would say it doesn't feel normal yet. I would say that that is, that would be a good way to describe what we're feeling right now.
I would second that, what Angie said about being normal. You know, if you look back at our underclassmen, our ninth and 10th graders, they really haven't had a full year of high school yet. So socially, it's been a pretty active start for us. Academically, you know, we're really focusing in on equity and breaking down the barriers for kids and starting out the year by building relationships. So I think it's really too early to tell with that. I couldn't give you any data on that. I know that teachers really do a great job of going back and doing some review to start the year and just getting kids feeling good about being back in school and taking it slow. And whoever did the calendar and put the four-day weeks for the first couple is a genius. It was really nice. The kids were tired at the end of the week, and the teachers were also. But more to come on that, I think, as we get going. And, you know, this is our first full week of school, or second full week of school. We'll be able to tell more as we go along and be happy to report back.
Ms. Nathan?
And to build on that comment, which was perfect, I would like to see if we could build this kind of feedback from our buildings into our calendar throughout the year, just to see how it's going, because we do love to hear from you directly. I don't think our community has the chance to see outside their own building, and those people who don't have students in schools don't get to see not only all the hard work you're doing, but all the results that you're getting and just your enthusiasm about building these relationships and doing everything for students that you can to make them successful. Everybody needs to see that, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Those words.
This is exciting, naming the new middle school. Our subcommittee, Julie Workman, Melissa Amundson, and Don Barlow, I hope you have something ready.
I do.
Good.
Also, just a quick review. Last spring, Rochester Public School students were invited to submit their ideas for what our new middle school, which is currently under construction, should be named. The criteria were to reflect the school district's values and beliefs, to represent the diversity within our community, and to instill inspiration in students. So the school board received and reviewed hundreds of submissions, and the school board subcommittee narrowed the list to the five finalists, which were Susan B. Anthony, Dakota, Martin Luther King Jr., Unity, and Woksepe. The public was invited to vote for the name of the new middle school. The voting was from September 8th through the 16th, with a winner to be announced at the school board meeting on September 21st, 2021. I guess that's tonight. So the winner that was chosen by the public is Dakota.
Any questions?
Come on. I would move approval of the resolution.
I'll read it, and then, absolutely, thank you. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve Dakota as the name of the new middle school.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a new school name. Thank you. Thank you, School Board. Thank you, community, for voting, and thank you especially to every student who submitted a name for the school. Eight point oh one, authorization to provide incentive pay for maintenance employees for the 2021-2022 school year.
Directors of the board, I'd like to ask Carl Bach and our Executive Director of Human Resources to come up. As board members know, we have, like many employers, need to be creative to try and find ways to attract talented and dedicated people to do the work in critical parts of our school district. And so we've been working with the representatives of our various employee groups to reach agreements on some additional incentives, and I want to thank Carl for the leadership he's shown in trying to be creative in some challenging times to meet the needs of our students. Carl.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, board members. What you see in front of you is very similar to the resolution that was brought about a month ago on August 17th. That was for our paraprofessionals. One of the differences here is there's quite a few less maintenance workers. We have about 120 in the district compared to over 650 paraprofessionals. That being said, we're encountering the same kind of challenges hiring our maintenance employees. We've held several job fairs, walk-in interviews. We've advertised extensively, and we are still looking at multiple openings. And we, one additional factor we're running into here is we have other businesses in town that continue to increase their starting salary. So we have had this in front of the union for quite some time, around the same time it went to the paras, it went out to the maintenance union. And right after our last board meeting, we got a response saying they would sign on with it. So similar to the para agreement, it is $500 upon hire, and then after 90 working days, it would be another payment of $1,000 for new employees. And then returning employees who returned to us during the 21-22 school year, who were with us during the 2021 school year, would get $500 split into two payments. And the approximate cost is $60,000.
Board members' questions? Mr. Barlow?
Yes, Mr. Bach, and thank you, first of all. I'm curious, not that these are representative of dominoes, if you will, but paras, now maintenance workers. From where you said, do you envision there being other worker shortages potentially? And if so, do you think a similar approach or strategy will be utilized? And then finally, when we enter into these MOAs, do they change our bargaining positions? Or do they, can you perhaps speak to that? Because most of these unions will be, their contracts will be coming up soon, so could you speak briefly to that as well?
Sure. To answer your first question, we do have a feeling that our food service workers are going to be approaching us. They have heard about the hiring incentives we've given to paraprofessionals, and they have made contact, and we're in the process of replying to them and probably arranging a meeting. As far as how this will impact future contract negotiations, I think it's very likely it will. I think by asking for this, and I think it's warranted, and I think we need to do things like this in an attempt to fill our positions and retain our people. Along the same line, we met with the union today and brainstormed other ideas, saying, sat across from the table and said, "What ideas do you have to maintain our employees and keep our employees here when we have a business in town that can offer money just without having to do what we have to do?" So we need to continue to problem solve. We need to continue to be creative and think outside of the conventional. But just to be honest, I think they're going to probably have an idea that we were struggling to hire, and I'm sure that will come up during financials. But I'm just going to shoot really straight on that.
Thank you.
Ms. Workman?
Yes. Was there any negative reaction from long-term maintenance employees? Because I understand that they also get a bonus, but the fact that the newly hired ones were really getting an incentive to stay for those 90 days, do you anticipate that we will be losing some of our longer-term employees from this area? I'm not trying to suggest anything to anybody here, but...
I don't know if we'll lose anybody. I think, similar to the paras, when we proposed this, the returning employees were wondering why they didn't get the same amount. We explained the cost that would go along with that, and our goal is to hire new employees and recognize those who have stayed with us. And our goal is to hire new employees and recognize those who have stayed with us. I don't know if there's an exact right amount to land on, but in conversations with employees who are here, they were supportive and saying, you know, we, and eventually it did get approved. We are providing a stipend or an incentive payment just for returning to work, and we're going to have to continue to look at, examine the kind of results we get from this, and maybe we'll need to think about continuing to do something like this when we get into the new year, depending on where we are with hiring. And I just think this is a, I think hiring is going to be a challenge. I know, we were talking about that today during our meeting, and they were asking us, do you think this is going to be something that's just going to, is temporary? I don't think it is. I think this is going to be a challenge moving forward, and hiring, some of our positions are going to be challenging, and we're going to be pushed to continue to innovate.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mine is sort of in the ballpark of the two previous comments. So I'm imagining that this is going to continue to happen, and might we, I don't even know what would be the appropriate route for this, but like study session it and like get ahead of the issue, rather than making these people ask their union representatives to then come to us, and then we take however many months it's going to take to kind of iron something like this out. Why don't, why can't we just assume that these things might happen and get creative a little bit ahead of, not entirely ahead of the curve, because obviously the problem is already here. But might we do that? And what would that look like? And also, I think my question, my second question was, you mentioned that you had had these conversations already, and it took them a little bit to get to a yes. And I'm wondering if you could speak to maybe what some of their concerns were, like, why did it take so long to get to this space? What were they needing additionally?
They didn't give us a whole list of reasons as to why. One of the things that was, that they responded to is that they are a different employee group. They've been here the entire time during COVID. They were on the front lines. As I stated before, we did have conversations with employees here that were saying they were supportive of it, and they were going to continue to discuss it. As far as the hiring piece, I think a number of factors came into play here with our pandemic, with the historically low unemployment rate, historically high rate of people. It's a hiring, it's a market for people seeking jobs. In the past, quite frankly, we've hired people without having to think outside of the conventional. People have tended to come to us, and we are, we've been spending a lot of time thinking of things that we're going to need to change and implementing those constantly. And I think even as exemplified by the meeting today, just having a discussion about things that maybe we could do within the contract that just haven't had happened before. And some of the things we talked about are, do we look at flexible work hours? Do we look at something during the summer where maybe they're working four tens? Maybe we need to start thinking about things like that, just to get creative. We'll be having another meeting. A couple of folks weren't able to join us today that were key, but we'll be doing that again. Maybe we can come up with some things that don't require us to change the contract or to come to the board and ask for more funding.
Right. Because I'm fine, of course, with giving people financial compensation for the work that they're doing, also to retain them. I guess I just, I don't want to get into a sense of like, this is Domino, like, we should just say, you matter to us, and the work you do is appreciated, and we're going to compensate you appropriately for that. And obviously, for whatever reason, this right now is not working for you, and let's look at these different groups and figure out, well, if everyone's going to start coming to us, we might as well just have a plan of how to respond.
Yeah. And these contracts are coming up in this coming June. They will expire, and then we will be seeking the parameter from you for starting that new negotiation cycle. That will be key as well.
Dr. Pecow?
Board members, I just want to really say I appreciate this. My conversation said the biggest issue was the difference in the incentive for new employees versus continuing employees, because they understandably said, wait, I've been with you the whole time. They also know we need to fill these positions because they have to fill in when the positions are open. But, so that was part of the tension. The other thing I just want to add is, as board members know, the working groups we're kicking off literally, we're announcing next week or the week after for the development of our strategic action plan, include one on organizational culture. And in addition to all these critical questions of compensation and things, we want Rochester Public Schools to be a place where people feel valued and like they are using their talents in service of kids and their communities, and it's a place where people really feel they can be their whole selves. And so even as we're talking about these really critical nuts and bolts things, we know a lot of people will stay with an organization because they feel that they belong, that they are appreciated, and they can do good work. So I think that's a piece of this as well, that I'm really excited is going to be a major emphasis of our new plan.
Thank you. Anything else? This is a briefing item, and since it's a contract for 2021-2022, I'm assuming it would be a good thing to get it approved soon, like tonight?
That would be wonderful.
Move to action.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's now an action item. Be it resolved, School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the memorandum of agreement to provide $1,500 incentive pay for newly hired maintenance workers and $500 to maintenance workers who maintain their employment from the 2020-2021 school year into the 2021-2022 school year and who meet conditions in the memorandum of agreement.
Move approval.
Move approval. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Bach.
Thank you.
Eight point oh two, policy recommendations. Second reading, board members, you have the policies. Policy Committee, anything to add?
Nothing to add unless someone has any comments or additional edits.
These have been thoroughly briefed before, and I know you're always anxious for more policy information.
Always. And they'll come back at the next meeting on the consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you. No more discussion tonight. Eight point oh three, approval of proposed school district property tax levy payable in 2022. This is a briefing item. Dr. Pecow?
Members of the Board, Chair Marvin, once again, I'm pleased to recognize John Carlson, our Executive Director of Finance, to give us an overview of this important item.
Well, thank you, Superintendent Pecow, and Chair Marvin, School Board members. I'm here to talk about the preliminary property tax levy amounts. So just a little brief talk here about property taxes. First, what, where does the money go? We put the money into three general buckets. There's the general fund, and that's for our general operations and certain targeted programs, like long-term facility maintenance, for example. We also have the community education fund. Examples of that would be early childhood and adult programming. And then debt service fund. So we're making the principal and interest payments on our bonds or our loans that we've taken out to, excuse me, pay for new schools. So who determines the amount of property tax? Well, there's a very complex set of laws and rules. The district has a little less flexibility as compared to our partners at the city and the county. My understanding is they more come up with an amount they need, and that's the amount they can set. We follow a whole bunch of rules and laws that define pretty much to the penny what we are allowed to seek. And the only way we can go above that is if we have one of these three types of votes. We could have an operating referendum where the community will come together and say, yes, we're willing to pay more for general operations. We could have a building bond referendum. We last had that in 2019, and that'd be for new facilities. You also could do it for remodeling facilities, but we've done it for new facilities. And then the third category is one that we do not take advantage of right now, but we've talked about studying the appropriateness of that, and that would be a capital projects referendum, most commonly used for technology. So who pays the property taxes? So if you own a home, or if you are an apartment building owner, you're a farmer, you're a business, you're all are going to contribute into the property tax levy. The amount that each of those properties pays is spread out through state law, and the county assessor, Olmsted County and Wabashaw County in our case, are responsible for doing that based on value of property. So some good news about our property tax base. This has been consistent year over year. The property tax base continues to grow. It's not just inflation of new properties. There is another $200 million of new construction properties in the district, and those properties will begin paying in for the first time in 2022. So as the tax base increases, and if it increases at a sufficient clip, that can offset actually an increase to individual property owners, even when our tax amount, you know, the total amount of levy goes up. So tax base increases, the taxing rate can actually decrease at the same time. So how does it compare out? We've taken a look at the report and where we're at. We noticed that there is still one error hanging out there that we need to get final approval sometime in the next nine days by the Department of Education. But once that's corrected, we are expecting that the levy will be right about $70 million in total. It will be going down in the general fund. It will be going up a little bit in the community education fund, and then in our debt service, this is all part of our bond repayment schedule, and our long-term facilities maintenance plans will have a little bit of an increase there as well. So why do property taxes in general go up? Again, it goes back to that 39 pages of formulas and calculations that we're provided with. The Department of Education does that for each district. There are some things that we know of that are going up because we've intentionally made them happen that way through the issuance of our debt, and that would be the debt service schedule. That includes, again, the new buildings that we just voted on in November of 2019, as well as the long-term facility maintenance bonds, as well as, there's one other category of funding in there. And this is the error that MDE needs to correct on our levy report right now. It's the certificates of participation for our technology. We're one of about four districts listed in statute that can borrow money for technology if it is within our achievement and integration plan. And so we're waiting for that debt schedule to be loaded into our property tax levy. And there are some items that are actually decreasing. For example, the unemployment insurance, we're allowed to levy for exact costs of unemployment. You have to estimate that a year in advance, though. And we're estimating that there will be very little unemployment. That kind of goes right along with what Carl was talking about, in that we're having trouble filling our positions. We're not in this place where we're actually laying off and then incurring unemployment expense. So that's going down on the property tax levy. So what does a 1% overall increase in our levy mean? It actually means it's going to be a decrease for most of our taxpayers. So if you have, for example, a $200,000 home, your property tax is probably going to go down about $29 a year. So again, that's because there's going to be more properties, more new businesses paying into the system, and we're not changing our levy very much. So that means overall, in general, your property tax is likely to go down. So our timeline of where we're at from here is, I want to bring back a corrected report, a final report for you on October 5th. That'd be the next School Board meeting. We have permission from the county auditor to extend our decision till that date. So on that date, we do need an action. And then November 30th, we recommend that we have the truth and taxation hearings, so we allow the public to come and speak. And then on December 7th is when we would ask you to take final action on the levy amount. And that's basically where we're at as of today, and I would be able to entertain any questions related to the levy at this time.
Ms. Workman?
Yeah, I think, and maybe I missed it, but I think taxpayers also need to understand that even though it looks like their property tax will be going down, if their property has been reassessed at a higher rate, then that wouldn't necessarily apply. So people really need to pay attention once they get those notices.
That's a very good point. The county auditor needs to send out each parcel, a specific notice about what their proposed tax increase or decrease will be by November 21st. So it's in taxpayers' hands by the time we have that meeting on November 30th. And that will, of course, they'll take the numbers that you have here, and they'll tell everybody specifically with what the city is proposing, the county, and the school district.
The resolution before us lays out, among other things, dates that we'll be meeting and making decisions, and it would be useful to approve this tonight?
Actually, no. I think if the levy, if the item just sits there, then it will put those dates in at that point.
Good enough.
I would say, I'll feel free to go now, and you can move on with your...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. This brings us to other business. We will be having a study session beginning at 5:00 on September 28th, where we'll be discussing an article, a PDF, by Michael Follin. Board members have a copy of that. We will have regular board meeting on October 5th, a study session where we will look at the annual calendar on October 12th, and another regular board meeting on October 19th. Ms. Nathan already suggested that we get put on the annual calendar, so this could be an item for the study session on October 12th, ensuring that we have regular feedback from schools as part of our, part of our calendar during the year. Any other issues that you want to be considered for a future agenda? Hearing none. It is 7:22, and we are adjourned.